Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
If you would please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no modifications to the agenda, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity to express your views to the council about issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. I know a number of you are here because of PSE, and that's fine. I think we all share your frustration. But they come third on the agenda, and so that's just the way it has to be. So I would suggest if you have comments from them that you hang around and let your feelings be known. Clerk, please call the first person.
Are you saying they shouldn't contribute?
No, no, they should.
Russ Johnson? Russ Johnson?
Do I come over here?
Yes, yes, right over there and just state your name and address.
My name is Russ Johnson. My address is 5635 Northeast 200th Street in Kenmore. I'm a longtime resident of Kenmore. My wife and I, Carol, have lived here for almost thirty-five years. We've raised five children here. My wife is a schoolteacher at Sheldon View Elementary, and I'm also a small business owner. I own a specialty travel company located here in Kenmore called Royal Journeys. And our little company works with corporations that want to take customers on sport fishing trips around the world. We work with a lot of major corporations. I'm here to express my deep concern over the frequent and long power outages that we seem to experience here in Kenmore. Following the power outages on September thirteenth, I felt a great deal of frustration about the loss of contact that I experienced with my customers. I had no idea what their concerns were, had no way of contacting them other than by phone, and in addition to this, we were experiencing, like all of you, the issues involved with not having power at our house. So at that point, I approached our city manager, Rob Carlinsey, and Assistant City Manager, Nancy Osley, and expressed my concern and asked if we could begin a process of trying to understand what is happening here in Kenmore and why are we losing power so frequently, and why does it seem that we are the last persons to get power restored? Since the September thirteenth power outage, we have had two additional power outages here in Kenmore. This is deeply concerning to me, to the point that I just took it upon myself as a local resident to visit with many of the major businesses here in Kenmore besides myself: the Safeway Store, Kenmore Camera, Kenmore Air, the sand and gravel concrete businesses, the plywood businesses, the animal hospital, several of the dentists, the Les Schwab Tire Store. And following this last business outage, each of these businesses sustained significant losses in terms of lost sales, in terms of losing contact with their customers. In addition, and I'm hoping that some of the other residents that are here today will speak to some of the personal costs of having a loss of power. Now, what I have learned in a nutshell through the efforts of our city managers is that we have a problem here in Kenmore. Puget Sound Energy has a problem. And the problem is that we have four circuits that supply energy in Kenmore, and one of these circuits, Circuit twenty-six, the distribution lines, and I'm not an electrical engineer, so forgive me if I'm not using the right words here, the distribution lines follow a corridor that does not have a roadway next to it. And so if there is a power outage, it is more difficult for the repair crews to follow that corridor going through people's backyards, up and over a hill that's greatly overgrown and a lot of trees, to discover the source and the cause of this power outage. In addition, we've learned that we're kind of at the end of the line, that the hub is apparently based in Kirkland, and the excuse, which I consider no longer acceptable to me as a businessperson, as a resident, is that since we're at the end of the line, that we should expect to be the last persons to get power. And I don't know how I'm doing for time. I don't want to overdo my thing, but can I just finish my comments here?
Yes, certainly. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're a little over, but that's okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm wondering if there are capabilities to install switches and circuits that would allow power to be routed from, say, Briar, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, through the Snohomish Power District, through the Seattle City Light, through whoever powers Bothell, so that we could transfer power into our area if we have an outage here in Kenmore. It seems like this would be a wise thing to do. In the case of public water supply, we already have those agreements in place. Water can easily be moved from any particular area to another area. Now, I know that water can flow any direction since it's under power. It's different than electrical power. But I'm suspecting that, in fact, I know for a fact that there are many communities in the United States that have circuits that allow power to be transferred from one area to another. When one looks at the power grid systems and power stability in other parts of the world, the United States is woefully lacking. For example, Stockholm, Sweden, which is a city not unlike Seattle, with lots of water, trees, lakes, so forth. Studies have been done there, and we've learned that in the urban areas of Sweden, that they lose power once every three years for an average of twenty-three minutes. Now, contrast that with us. We've lost power five times in the last two years for hours and days at a time. The Utility, the Oversight Commission for Power classifies a power outage as losing power for five minutes. We're losing power for days at a time. I wanted to express my deep concern about the situation to the city council, to our managers. I don't think this is an acceptable condition for us here in a community where we're trying, and we have been doing some marvelous things in our community, especially lately. And I know that our managers here are trying hard to make a friendly and positive business community here, and I think that this is undermining it. And so thank you for hearing me out. I hope these comments are somewhat useful.
Thank you. I know there's a number of you here tonight for this, and try to hold it to three minutes. We've got a lot of people to go through, and then we have a full business agenda after that. So I want you to get your frustrations out, because, believe me, we're just as frustrated. We can't do anything. If we could, we would have done it. But in any event, that's Puget Power, so if you can, please, try not to repeat and try to hold it three minutes. Clerk, please call the next person.
Mary Ann Heine?
Well, I'll be very brief. Mary Ann Heine, fifty-eight, forty-seven, Northeast 181st Street, Kenmore. And I completely agree with Mr. Johnson's comments, and I want to applaud him for the research that he's done. It's really frustrating. You know, our economy has changed. It's not just businesses that require establishments, that require Internet and electricity. It's also homes these days. My husband works for a major corporation, worldwide corporation Honeywell, and he works from home most of the time, and it's very inconvenient and frustrating for him, as well as for myself. I've been very frustrated. We moved here three years ago from Bellevue, and I haven't seen any kind of move toward investing in the infrastructure. And I really want to encourage PSE to start making an investment into underground power in this area. It's essential that we have it. We pay the same rates as other parts of King County, and for us to be the low man on the totem pole for having our power restored is ridiculous. You know, if that's the way it's going to be, then our rates should be cut in half. But I'm frustrated with the lack of attention to this area, and I really want to encourage PSE to, like I said before, invest in our infrastructure. We need underground power. You know, there's underground power, a block in either direction, and then the wires go above ground. That's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, David Erickson. I live in Kenmore, six-one-zero-nine, Northeast 188th Place. I, too, have been here for about thirty years and have raised four sons in the city of Kenmore. I understand that right now the city is looking at renewing your contract with PSE, and so maybe some of these comments could be taken as, you know, as something to put on the negotiating table, how we can address this issue of power failures. I don't have a business, and I don't have a big, high-pressure need to, you know, to have power at home. And actually, when power goes out at first, it's kind of fun. It's like a camping trip, you know? You break out the candles, you try to figure out what you're going to do, typically go to bed early and hope there's power by the morning. But when the hours become days, it becomes more than just an inconvenience. When the power went out in August, it was out for three days, and we lost probably a couple hundred dollars' worth of food, you know? Not to mention the discomfort of being in a cold house and things not working, the computer, emails. Even though I don't have a business, we do a lot of emailing with different things with my son and my wife and the scout troop, and email is the major way to keep in touch. So that's a big problem, is the financial cost to those of us who lose power. And this last power failure we had last week, the power went off, back on, off again, back on, and I was working on the computer. It crashed. I started again. It crashed again. And now the power came back on after about twenty-seven hours, and my computer's not working. And so I've taken it to the shop, and it's too expensive to fix. I need to buy a new computer, five hundred dollars, Windows 10. My printer doesn't work with Windows 10. I have to buy a new printer, so another two hundred dollars. And, you know, I'm just kind of saying what you guys already know. This is more than just an inconvenience. There's a financial cost even just for citizens to have to replace things and get things back in order. So my time's almost up. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Carl Michaelman, one-eight-zero-two-three, Sixty-Second Avenue Northeast, Kenmore, Washington. And before I get on to say, I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. A little positive stuff there. So with that being said, I'll kind of echo what everyone's been saying on here, concerns of, I like to call it the Northwest, I think if I'm correct, is it Northwest Kenmore? Not South Kenmore or North Kenmore, but that little Circuit twenty-six. I am a resident of Kenmore for eighteen years, and I am a business owner at Michaelman Insurance Group, so when there was a storm, I had a little bit of business to take care of my clients because there was a lot of claims. The problem is, what I'm seeing is, is that being here in eighteen years, I'm seeing it getting worse for the infrastructure of electric, I mean, for the PSE. I think it was two thousand eight or two thousand nine, where I live, I was out for seven days. It was in the winter, and the only thing that kind of kept me going is I have a travel trailer, and so at least I had heat, food, and, you know, a place to sleep, and a generator. But what concerns me, and I know we're all venting to the city council, and really, you know, even you have a contract, what are you going to do? You're going to stop PSE from coming into our city? That's not going to happen. But I think what I'd like to see from PSE is that, you know, the infrastructure's getting really old here, and that's what we're talking about. We're talking about that main line, okay? And the bottom line is, is that we're having more of an outage than the norm around, you know, the area. And so with that being said, I think that PSA should take in consideration that it's time to, you know, fix this infrastructure. It's not getting better. It's getting worse. I came from, I think it was, I was living in Woodinville many years ago, so I came and moved out here. I go, great, the power's not going out, because it wasn't for the longest time. It was really great. But I'm telling you, probably the past seven years, and again, this year a couple times, it's a concern. So I don't know how we're going to work this, but as a businessperson, I'll agree with Mr. Johnson, especially in my business, but I do have a generator, you know, and I have a cellphone, but still, it makes it very difficult because I don't have the ease. And especially when, as an independent insurance agent, I had a few claims. So having the power out, we had to tell our clients, please leave a message. Our phones are not working, and we'll call you back. So anyways, that's it. I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Michaelman.
There's no one else signed up?
No one else signed up? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Come on up. And if you will, please, after you're done, go see the clerk and sign your, sign the form, if you would, please.
My name is Fern Forrest. I live at seven-zero-three-one, Northeast 175th Street, number forty, in the Lakeview Mobile Home Park. There are ten of us that live down by the river. We were out without power longer than anybody else in the park. PSE was called several times, and we're all retired, are all over fifty-five. They were called several times. They said, you have power? We did not have power down there. There is some sort of a break in the power coming that far in our park. The last time, September, whenever we had the last power, they were out there in the middle of the night drilling in the asphalt, looking for the power line. It wasn't where they thought it was. It was someplace else, and we're really tired of being, having to call and call. It should be documented someplace, that they need to make sure that the whole park is getting their power back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you, yeah, go to the clerk, that'd be great. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else? Thank you all for your comments. I mean, I, we all were without power. We lost food. So I really know your frustration. It seems like if there's a slight breeze, the power goes out. And I know that the franchise agreement is up, and we are looking at performance and reliability. That's our number-one issue with PSE, is we want to see substantial improvements in performance and reliability. And with that, thank you very much for coming tonight, and I do hope you stay around and listen to the person from PSE. They're third on the agenda, so we expect the first two items to go probably fifteen minutes or so. And if you can, you'll probably pick up some good information on where some of the money is going here, so, in any event. With that, move on to consent agenda. If there is no, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved as written. Next item then on the agenda is the Regional Coalition for Housing and the Trust Fund briefing. Nancy Osley, our Assistant City Manager, and Arthur Sullivan, Arch Program Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Arthur Sullivan, Executive Director of the Regional Coalition for Housing, also known as Arch, will be with us for this agenda item and the following one. The first one is to, just to discuss with you what some of the recent discussions at the Executive Board. I represent the city manager at the Executive Board of Arch. And then, more recently, a group of elected officials from each of the Arch member jurisdictions have been discussing some possible ways to enhance the amount of funding that is available for affordable housing projects through Arch. And Arthur has a brief presentation, but it is something, as we have noticed, that the dollars don't go as far as they used to, and so we have been looking at what are some possible dedicated funding sources and other means to bolster the funding for these projects. Councilmember Nigel Herbig represented the city at the September workshop. Thanks for being there. And as you may recall, a few weeks ago, the city council did approve having language in our legislative agenda for this next year to support funding and other actions to support affordable housing development. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Arthur for some comments.
Thank you. Mayor, Council. Your packet has some background information on pages, I believe, nine oh nine to nine twenty-six, nine eleven and nine twelve summarize the proposal that was reviewed by council members at the Arch workshop back in September. As some background, the Arch Trust Fund has been an integral strategy supported by the members of Arch for a long period of time. It's a program that is consistent with many of the city's housing elements policies to provide direct support for affordable housing, especially for housing to assist lower-income households. Pages nine twenty-three and nine twenty-four summarize all the projects that have been funded through the Arch Trust Fund over the past twenty years. Over forty-three million dollars of funding and other forms of assistance, such as land donations, has supported over thirty-one housing units for families, seniors, homeless, and persons with special needs. A number of years ago, members of, councils of the members of Arch collectively developed goals for providing the direct assistance referred to as parity. This is a way that if we wanted to raise a million and a half, how would the members of Arch equitably have goals to contribute to get to those levels of funding? Those goals have not been updated in over fifteen years. While the parity goals help to guide each city's efforts, the Trust Fund has always been a voluntary program that provides flexibility to the members of Arch on the level and the type of assistance that they provide. This approach that's been used by the cities for the last twenty years has been recognized both regionally and nationally as sort of a leader in the field on how to work collaboratively together. At the workshop, the first part of the discussion was regarding needs for housing in East King County. Information related to your needs and local efforts is included on pages nine thirteen to nine nineteen. This information is very similar to information that was presented earlier this year during your updates to your housing elements. So my intent now is not to go into great detail on that information, but if you do have any questions on that information, be happy to answer questions on those. What they do show is that we do have significant needs, and they are growing across a wide range of different kinds of needs. What is new in your packet is information specific to the Housing Trust Fund. That's on pages nine twenty to nine twenty-two. This summarizes information developed with the Executive Board as they evaluated the Arch Trust Fund over the past year plus. As noted previously, the overall Trust Fund has been successful at supporting a wide range of housing. But this information does show that over time, there have been shifts in the use of the housing funds, such as the type of housing that has been funded. We used to do more preservation of existing housing than we've done the last ten years. We've also seen that we haven't leveraged as quite a wider range of other sources of funds. We still have leveraged a lot of other public funds, but we haven't leveraged the same range of different types of forms of housing. But most importantly, has been a decrease in the amount of housing we've been able to support. Page nine twenty-one shows that we have gone from funding about a hundred and ninety units a year to just over a hundred units a year. Probably the major cause of this has been that the Trust Fund, and granted, cities have a lot of priorities and issues that they need to deal with, has been essentially flat for over fifteen years, and we know what housing costs have done in that same period of time. So you received in your packet a summary of a proposal that was discussed with the joint councils. That's on pages, as I mentioned earlier, nine eleven and nine twelve. The primary concept is we want to maintain the flexibility that we've always had. That's been a core element of what we've done at Arch, and that's what we feel is important to do going into the future. But what we want to do is explore if there are ways to potentially grow the Trust Fund given the situation our cities are in. We see this as primarily being done through a combination of cities looking at existing funding sources as you have in the past, but also potentially finding new funding tools potentially for you to be able to tap into. The way we see doing that is to work collaboratively to create some additional funding tools that would be available to you at your discretion to consider using in combination with your general funds. The memo in your packet lists several different options that the Executive Board came up with based on working, looking at your existing sources, and where legislative authority may be sought to enable cities to use those. These include, one, adding a new layer explicitly for affordable housing. That is actually something the county used to do about twenty years ago. A second is a demolition fee of existing housing. And a third is a condominium conversion fee. The proposal is to seek legislation authorizing these new financing tools for cities to choose to use. It would not mandate the use of them, and this would be somewhat similar to what we did a number of years ago when the Arch members went to the legislation to get the multifamily tax exemption tool expanded where it could only be used for a couple cities at that time to be available to more cities, and that you have used on a specific site in your community. But it was through that collective effort that we got the legislation to give you that authority to explore that. So the first step is to try to get that enabling legislation. After that, we're proposing to get the work group with the council representatives back together and to look at the parity goals and to see whether or not, given the field and, you know, the result of the legislation, do we challenge ourselves with higher goals for the update to housing for the update, the housing goals in the Trust Fund. Then what would happen is each council would go back and deliberate through their budget and other procedures and decide regarding the Trust Fund what they would like to do. Again, it would be at the discretion of each city. It is only guidance that the Trust Fund has been, the parity goals have been used in the past. And we would assist in your deliberations to see what combination of the tools you have been using and/or if you want to use any other new tools. Each city would have their own individual conversations, just like we have in the past, but the main intent is to give you some more tools to look at updating the overall goals and then seeing if there's ways that you can respond in your community that fits in with all the other priorities that you're trying to deal with. So to support this overall effort, the first step is that a number of Arch members are evaluating, including in their legislative agenda, support for legislation that enables the local discretion for these tools that we described above. Some of you may be aware and heard of a lot of work being done in Seattle. They are very interested in the REIT tool, so that is something they have already started to coordinate. Kirkland is coordinating the demolition fee, and then we're working with another legislator on the condominium conversion. So at this point, it's sort of a first step in a many-step process, and so that's something, as Nancy mentioned at the beginning, you had in front of you for your legislative agenda. I'm speaking with a number of other councils and presenting the similar information, and others are also considering that path. So at this point, if you have any questions on the proposal or any of the materials, we'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thanks, Arthur. I appreciate you coming again tonight and sharing some information with us. One of the, one of the difficulties I'm having here is trying to figure out what, what the end goal that we're trying to get to here in Kenmore from a dollar amount, because one of the, before, I feel like before we even talk about what the dedicated funding source is, we need to know what we're trying to do and accomplish. And the excise tax, I will say that, you know, when I saw that 0.25%, that was, was out there, and I know that was discussed a while ago, that was something that, it just seemed very, seemed too high, and it seemed very, did not represent the community. It represented, it put the burden on a small number of people. And I can see some relationship on the condo conversions and the demolition, that there is at least a more logical line of thought there. But I think what would really help me first is to understand what we're deficient in now in our contribution and what we need to get to. And maybe part of that can be addressed through the general fund, but I don't know. I'm open to a dedicated funding source. I just, I think it needs to be spread more throughout the community so that everybody is a participant in the payment, if that's what we choose to do, rather than focus on a small user group to attach a fee to.
And I think the only comment, and that's why we're saying every city will go through their own conversations, the question is enabling tools. In that meeting, there was a lot of conversation around the REIT tool and a comment about, boy, is 0.25. too high. We did, in the analysis we prevented, we showed ranges. And one of the issues that did come very strongly out of that conversation is maybe not all cities want to use that tool, but definitely what came out is for some cities are saying, we wouldn't want to be at 0.25. We might want to do it, but we might want to do it at a much lower level. We have already been talking with the people in Seattle. They originally drafted the legislation to say 0.25. They have, my understanding is looking at modifying that if they haven't already to say up to, so that it is, that's an area of choice. That's one thing we've always tried to do with legislation when we've worked it, is to try to give cities a range of options, not say, here's how you do it. If you use it, you use it this way or not, but rather here is enabling, you have a flexibility on how you decide to implement it. And so that's something that's always been important to us, and if we do move forward, it's important we hear those kind of comments to make sure there is enough flexibility so that there, there'd be tools that you might want to consider using.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing.
Well, I have, I was, I have another question. Since nobody else has a question, I was waiting for. So, you know, one of the things when we talked about, over the last few years, we've kind of brought our social services expenditures in line with peer cities, and we, we analyzed a lot of different metrics to look at what's the best way to, what is a reasonable amount for Kenmore to be paying? And as we discovered, in some areas, we were significantly higher than our peer cities. And without really an explanation how we got there or why we were there, one of the things that would be beneficial also for me to, is to understand what our peer cities are doing, and it helps to put in line a reasonable expectation of where we should be, rather than just throwing out a raw number out there. I, I need to have more information about what's going on around us, rather than just in Kenmore.
So we'll be happy to have, again, we're here as your support staff. We're happy to have those, but just for quick reference, in your packet on page 925 and 926 are the parity goals. And it shows everyone's lows and high goal, and that was one thing the councils decided they wanted to have a range, and they were long-term goals. And I do believe there is, and I'm sure if there's an explanation of where the goals came from, but they're based on a formula that are based on the size of the city, how much housing growth you're projected to have, and how much employment growth you're projected to have. And so that was something all the councils agreed upon were the three key factors to do, and so that's where your figures are coming from. So there is some relative, that's where the relative weight came in, is by looking at those three factors for all the members of Arch and coming up, and that's what influenced it. And then there is a summary in here that shows every year how much all the members have provided.
Yeah, and I saw that, and I'm just wondering, is there something, though, that gets to, you know, the issue is affordability. So you could have a city that has a, the similar growth projection, and yet this, the average rent in Kenmore may be significantly less than that peer city. And that's the part that I don't know where we are in that rental scale and affordability scale.
And I know you have a long agenda tonight. We'll note that, and when we come back, that's the kind of information we'd be more than happy to provide. We, we do, we have collected that information, and there's a lot to dig through, but if we can help you sort through some of that, that's what we're here for.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Arthur, thank you for this chart on, on 925. I mean, to actually spell out where 30% of the median income is, 50%, it's very, very helpful, especially if you're in, when we have a median income, I guess, for a family of two, then at around $71,000. So, yeah, when you get down at 30%, where I know a number of seniors are at $21,000, I mean, that's the 30% range of poverty. So, thank you. Thank you very much for, for that information. All right, so that was informational. You want, we're going to the next item then, right?
Yes.
Wonderful. So, got to get back to it. So the next item then is approved contract number 15 dash C 1487 for a regional equitable development initiative fund inter-local agreement with Arch.
Just a brief introductory statement. This is a project that the council heard about a few months ago when you looked at the trust fund expenditures that city funds would be involved in. And this creates a new revolving loan fund for acquiring strategic properties, particularly around transit-oriented development areas. And this inter-local agreement is, is between the public funders of, of that fund, and there would also be other private investors involved in the fund as well. Arthur's been working on this for a long time, so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, again, thank you. This is a program that has been in the works for probably three years or more now. It is, it grew out of what's referred to as the growing transit communities, which was a regional effort of how do we grow our transit areas to include housing, and as importantly, including affordable forms of housing with that process. This was one of the strategies that was identified. So for the last two years, a group of public funders have been working with some other players, enterprise primarily, who have been doing similar types of programs in other parts of the country. This is basically, it's a land loan program. It's meant to be a revolving fund that people can access who would have challenges with getting a land loan to secure property near transit, early in the transit process, design process, because one of the things they find is once transit is installed, land values have a tendency to go up, and it makes it harder and more challenging for the transit areas to be used for housing and affordable housing in particular. And we find that transit usage is highest amongst people who are more moderate and lower incomes. So this program creates a revolving land fund. It has, it's seeded with public funds combined with private funds, where you then use a blended rate so that the overall interest rate is below 4%. We can do specialized underwriting because the public funders are the top loss funder, but we are also leveraging a lot of other money. So your $25,000 that you approved last spring as part of the 2014 awards is leveraging $500,000 from the rest of the Arch members, which is leveraging another $2 million from Seattle, King County, and the state of Washington, which is then leveraging another $13 to $20 million of private funds. So it sort of all adds up. And what you approved and the conditions and the background that we gave you, none of that's really changed since the spring. What has changed is legally, it's been decided that we also need an inter-local agreement. So where we normally just have a funding agreement, which you already authorized be entered, and you had a number of conditions which need to be addressed, the inter-local essentially is, is a replication, but that needs to go to all the public funders. It addresses issues such as governance structure, and that will involve the Arch members having a member on the Oversight Committee, which is the policy oversight group, as well as there'll be a credit committee which will have two public funders. There'll be one public funder who is there on a regular basis, but wherever the project is located, the public funder who is closest must also vote on that. So anything in East King County, someone representing the Arch members have to, to vote on that loan. There is also a list of what needs to, the main document that will control all the funders, the public and the private, is called the Master Credit Agreement. It's referenced in a number of places. There is a listing in there of things that must be addressed. It's almost the same list we gave you of conditions that must be addressed over governance, a number of issues, geographic balance, how the funds get distributed, the governance structure, and a number of other elements along those lines. Those are all listed in the development agreement. The other thing that it has a requirement for is an explicit requirement for geographic balance of the funds. So based on how, where the public funds came from, we basically are being told 28% of the resources from this program will be spent in East King County. So that is, and that is in the inter-local, and it will also be in the Master Credit Agreement. There are requirements for affordability covenants. There will be long-term affordability in any development that is done, that will be at least 50 years. The inter-local has relatively low affordability requirements. Our goal is to get significantly better, but this is, again, a land loan that's done early. These are allowed potentially to be land loans for up to five years or even more, that holds the land until the right kind of project can be put together. And based on the experience of other regions, generally, there is significant affordability in these developments. The program is designed to be set up for a 10-year period, at which point in time it will be revisited as to whether or not it's worth extending, or if the project should dissolve and then funds returned, to the extent they are available, returned to the public funders and all the funders who are investing in the project. And then most importantly, in terms of the governance structure, again, as was in the conditions this spring, the inter-local is basically, you are authorizing the Arch administrating agency to act in your behalf, just like you do with your trust fund. In this case, that is currently Bellevue, and you are authorizing them to act after consultation with the Arch Executive Board. So the Master Credit Agreement or any other documents going into the future will be reviewed by the Arch Executive Board, and then once they sign off on it, then the, will be signed off on by the city of Bellevue acting in behalf of all the members. It's very similar to how we do the Trust Fund at this point in time. So that's a quick, that's the overview of the program. We're hoping to have the program effective by the first quarter of next year, so we're about ready to go. The private funds, we do need to have a minimum of $18 million occurring to the inter-local. We have those funds secured at this time. So we're just negotiating a lot of the details, so we should be able to be operational very soon.
Questions? So then the other cities in Arch, just for clarification, are Bellevue, Iskwa, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Redmond, Woodinville, and us.
Yes, so those are all the jurisdictions that we have a mapping process where this, where we want to focus the program, and you're all the cities that have areas within your community that are potentially eligible to use the program.
And we're considered East King County because that border is right there with Lake Forest Park, right? And so, even though sometimes it doesn't make sense to me, we are East King County. All right. If there are no further questions, we want to approve the Resolution Number 15 dash 267 and approve the Contract Number 15 dash C 1487, a regional equitable development initiative fund inter-local agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Motion stands approved unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Puget Sound Energy briefing on system reliability. Nancy Alzey and Raylin Asha with PSE, interim Community Engagement Manager, Municipal Relations. That's a big title.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a briefing and discussion that we had arranged several weeks ago, and as luck or a lack of luck would have it, this comes right after a major power outage. And so, as was mentioned earlier, we are commencing now with franchise agreement negotiations with, with PSE. And Raylin Asa is, is here tonight to provide some information, as, as we requested earlier, about system reliability and other issues that PSE is facing in Kenmore.
Can you make it work? So I'll just, first of all, say thank you. I'm Raylin Asa, our interim municipal engagement manager for PSE, and thanks for having us tonight. I'm looking forward to talking about Kenmore's reliability, power outage history recently, and kind of an overview of the power system in general in PSE, and a little bit of a safety moment as well. He wants me to buy a license.
So yours is out now?
Yeah.
Is this it?
What did they do? Take yours and give it to him?
Oh, those are the pictures that. I have the presentation on flash drive if you'd like me to go get it. I have the presentation on flash drive if you'd like me to go get it. Okay? Okay.
Can you pull the plug out, Abby?
Nancy, can you, can you log in? Because it's on email, too.
Sorry. That's okay. I don't know what's wrong.
Yeah, sure.
You're out.
Yeah.
It has to have a PSE name.
This is terrible.
It has to have the PSE thing. This is terrible.
Yeah, I did put a copy of that.
Something totally different.
Oh, that's the PDF.
I put the PDF.
Want to use the?
Is it just whenever you touch it? There we go. It's like a loose wire or something.
Okay, I think we're running. Can you hear me?
All right.
Maybe if I can figure out how to get it to go to slideshow. I'll just do this.
Start the slideshow.
All right.
There we go.
So, a quick overview of PSE, our service territory. You can see that we cover everything in cream, orange, and green. We have about 1.1 million electric customers, 790 or about 800,000 gas customers, and we cover about 600,000 square miles in 10 counties. So, for Western Washington, we're the biggest utility. I wanted to quickly talk about, for those who are not quite familiar with the power system, how it works, how power gets to your home, and where the outages generally occur, so we can talk about it. I'll be on the same, same page with, with language. Our generation, obviously, we all know what that is. It comes from either hydro, solar, wind, natural gas, gets on high-powered transmission lines, and then comes to a substation in your community, and then it then just gets out on our distribution lines and what we call our circuits, which then have lateral connections or smaller distribution lines connected to them. So, how do power outages occur? We've all had to experience a few: storms, construction mishaps, and downpours and wires. Downpours and wires can be caused from storms like we've all seen, wind, and then also from carpool accidents. That's another big cause of issues with downpours in our communities. And then, critters and equipment failures. This is just a picture of some equipment on the ground after our storm in, last week. I wanted to quickly talk about the Kenmore, Kenmore from PSE's perspective. We serve about 9,000 customers here in the city of Kenmore. Most of our customers in Kenmore are served by our Kenmore Substation. And I know this is a very unhelpful map, but we have our Kenmore Substation in this area, and then we have our Inglewood Substation down here. We have nine circuits in total that serve, that serve Kenmore. As you, as we talked about, the circuits are the, the bigger distribution lines, quote unquote, that get to your home. They're about the same size in terms, but what they serve. And I, as folks have mentioned, we have a couple of circuits that have had reliability issues, and those circuits are generally located in backyards. They were there long before the homes, but then homes were built up to, on either side of them. So, Kenmore area reliability. As I mentioned, we have a couple of circuits or pocket areas within the city of Kenmore that perform poorly compared to our other PSE circuits or pocket areas. We know there are a few issues here in the city of Kenmore. Our planning department has taken a look at it, you know, as, as was mentioned in the public comments, for a long, long time, you know, with our normal maintenance and replacement programs, things were running, humming along just fine here in the city of Kenmore with the exception of major, major storms. And then, several years ago, started to experience problems, increased density, increased, you know, building up and vegetation growth along the, along the circuit lines. And so, our planners took a good look at what can we do to address these issues. So, they've started to do some things already, increased vegetation maintenance along our lines. As you know, a lot of power outages are caused by tree limbs, either during storms or not during storms, or even full trees that can take down a line or a whole pole. So, we've done increased vegetation maintenance and a lot more trimming along our circuits and backyards. They're on a four-year instead of a six-year schedule, and they're cut back, you know, fairly decently to survive those four years and not have limbs in or right next to the lines. In addition, they've done some other major things that are planned for this coming year to be put into service. A recloser, which helps automatically close in portions of the circuit for customers to experience maybe seconds or milliseconds of interruption and then have their power restored. On 195th, which is on our Kenmore 26th Circuit that you've all heard about tonight, and probably some of you live on. We're going to be installing two additional switches to be able to isolate our outage areas as well. And then, we'll be doing some distribution automation work in the Wanita area, or South Kenmore area. So, I think tonight, we've heard from folks on, on Kenmore 26th and our north, northwest part of Kenmore, or north, northern part of Kenmore, but that we also have some issues in South Kenmore. And so, we'll be trying to address those through two different ways with planned projects starting next year. And the way it works within the power world and the energy, in the energy business is we have to take a look at what's happening, plan for it, and then put it into service. So, it takes sometimes a little longer than some other things. A little more detail on, on the Kenmore 26th Circuit that I know we've heard about. In the recent, recent history, in the last couple of years, we've had critter, equipment failure, and wind outage histories. Critters, we all have a lot of birds and squirrels in our backyards, and they get into stuff, and they can cause an outage. In addition, I know that there was insulator broken on Kenmore 26th this last couple of months, which took several hours to find and repair and replace. And then, we've had two storms, August and November. As I mentioned, the Kenmore 26th is located on easements in backyards. For the most, most of the circuits located in backyards. We have access challenges, as you've heard about. We know that. We're trying to address it. We've talked with city staff about ways we can deal with that. How can we partner together to think about how we can better access that circuit? What can we do? There are no straight roads along the circuit at all. And so, how do we get in and out of there? How do we continue to serve those customers in the best way possible by having it close to their homes without a road next to them? You know, there's a few cul-de-sacs that pop in and out, but we don't put circuits like this. We try to keep them fairly straight so that people can connect to them quicker and easier, and we can access them faster. I'm sure our engineer in the back is hearing me say all these terms and screaming, but I'm trying to talk, and I'm trying to, trying to, trying to use language that we can all understand, including myself. System plans. As I mentioned, we have our recloser. We have switches being installed on the Kenmore 26th issue, Kenmore 26th Circuit. And then, we have additional plans for work beyond that if those fixes don't perform as we've anticipated they will. We anticipate they're going to reduce outages really significantly and times of outages really significantly for folks along, along that circuit. But we have additional plans in place or in the works if those don't perform. So, we need to put them in next year, give them about a year through the winter, see how it works, see, because you know, history does not always predict the future, see what happens, and then see if we need to do further steps. I want to talk a little bit, too, about how power is restored. I know there's been some concerns about that, and where are you located, and where, how power is restored to Kenmore? Are we at the end of the circuit? Does that mean we get our power restored last? So, quickly, thought I'd talk about what we do first and what we do last. First, we try to restore our transmission lines. They're the ones that deliver power to the biggest amount of customers and the communities that, your transmission lines in Kenmore deliver power to Bothell, Kirkland, Redmond, all sorts of communities up and down. We also restore power to hospitals, water systems, and other energy or utility stations first. It's important that hospitals obviously receive their power before any individual in a major storm event. And then, after that, we go straight to distribution and substations. So, the substations that take the power, step it down from the transmission voltage into the distribution voltage, we repair them if there's an issue, and then we go to the circuits that, that feed homes and businesses. Often, this is all being restored at the same time. So, we have lots of crews all working on things. We have crews that specialize just on transmission lines. We have crews that specialize just on distribution lines. But in the event of major outages, our first priority is to get those high-voltage lines back in service. And that's what we've worked on this past week. I want to talk a little bit about the two most recent storms. August was the, the longest in terms of duration for outages for Kenmore and all of our service territory. It was a huge drought, as we all know, this summer. It caused extensive tree damage, which means we didn't necessarily see it during the drought, but as soon as we got a big windstorm, because the leaves were still on, what water they did or, or sap they did have in those trees, it created a major impact in terms of what they took down. The trees fell, how much of the, of our circuits they took down. They maybe took down several poles with one tree, just the force of the wind and the, and the weight of the trees and the branches. It was the third largest for PSE in the, in the past decade, and it was the worst we've experienced in our northern region. Kenmore is right on the border of what we consider PSE's northern region, and I cover from Kenmore to the Canadian border. What basically hits Whidby tends to hit, Whidby Island tends to hit Kenmore in terms of winds and impacts. And this was our worst that we've had ever. So, this past one, this last week, we had Kenmore restored in 24 hours, or 20 to 20, 24 to 28 hours, depending on the particular area. Most of our outages were caused by transmission outages, trees that fell under the transmission lines. That's why we focused on that first. And just kind of as a tidbit, we had Kenmore back up and running about a day before Woodinville in our territory. You were back up and running long before the neighboring Snowpud communities, Bothell, Briar, and then Lake Forest Park. I know that Seattle City Light, while they don't publish as much information, they were out as well. So, it was one of the opportunities that most of the Kenmore outages were caused by transmission, and we had them up and running, and that's why you heard a little bit of the comments of power went out, came back on, power went out, came back on. Our transmission lines, we, when it went out, we had a backup that came back in and restored power to the substation, and then that one was taken out as well. So, we had, we had outages on our transmission lines, all of them that served this area. And so, that's why there was that outage. Just to talk a little bit about our restoration efforts, I focused on the November storm just because it's easy to remember for me and for everybody else, but also just it kind of speaks to how we do our restoration in general during storms. We have storm bases or regional locations that we open up in major events. Our, so our North King Storm Base located in Redmond was opened. All of our other Western Washington bases were opened as well. We opened our Emergency Coordination Center, our ECC, which allows us to coordinate better internally and get things restored more quickly. We also deployed our community outreach field teams. One went to the Kenmore Safeway on Wednesday afternoon, and power was restored to most folks in Kenmore that, that evening. We had 17 line crews in the Kenmore area, the North King area, which is Kenmore, Bothell, Kirkland, and Redmond. We had 15 service crews, and then we had six tree crews assisting with vegetation removal. And that's pretty typical. I just pulled that one because, like I said, it was recent, but it's very typical of how our restoration efforts and the number of crews, depending on the level of damage that we would, that we would deploy. We had, of those crews, just, just kind of for information, about half were our own, what we call Patelco crews, or our service provider, provider crews, and half were foreign, I think all from Canada in this area. We call them foreign even if they're not from Canada. It's just our internal lingo. And just as a reminder, never touch a downed power line. As simple as that seems, we have an issue at every storm. Someone's going to go help out and clear a roadway, or clear a sidewalk, or clear a driveway and touches a power line. Luckily, we haven't had issues with them being hot when they've been touched in recent history, but you never know. Even our servicemen don't go out and touch down power lines until they know it's dead or can have the ability to kill it. So, that's just a reminder. For storm communications and how you can get more information, we have our outage map on pse.com. Now, it's a big, big improvement over what you used to have to do, which was call into the, call into the call center here located in Bothell and get information. Now, you can go on the outage map and get a general idea of when power might be restored to your home. You can go on Facebook. We have a, we're constantly updating our Twitter account. Flickr shows some really nice photos of what our crews are doing, and it's updated hourly. And then, we have our YouTube channel on PS, or, yeah, we have our PSE YouTube channel, sorry, which gives a good, I guess, deeper insight into what our crews are doing and kind of what PSE is doing overall. And then, there's my information. But I'm guessing you have questions, which is really why I'm here.
Councilmember Herbig?
First, thank you for coming, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes with, you know, just the timing-wise, it was, the way it worked out was kind of funny. I had to toss my fridge for, I think, the second time this year, maybe the third, this last week. My daughter missed a day of school. So, you can understand if I'm a little frustrated. I don't mean to aim that at you. I'm just letting you know where I am mentally right now. So, you were talking about easements with Circuit 26, or you were talking about how Circuit 26 runs through backyards. You guys have easements through those backyards, correct?
We do have easements, yeah.
Okay. Do you currently enforce those easements at all, or?
So, those easements were there, they've been there for 50 or more years, depending on the actual location. We do enforce them for vegetation, but we need to partner with our local municipalities throughout our service territory for access.
So, explain to me why you need the city's help when it comes to the access, because I don't quite understand this. Your easement is not our easement.
Correct. It is our easement. And we could, in theory, go in, in theory, and move all the fences and create a, create a road that's never received well by residents. You know, one neighbor may want their power on in 10 minutes, and one may neighbor may want their fence and their trees. So, it's a partnership for how we can best access the line and restore the power, and then work with, work with the customers and residents along the line on their vegetation and our accessibility to the line.
On some level, it sounds like you're asking us to take on some of your responsibilities or your work to, to make that work. And I just, I frankly don't see it as our responsibility to enforce your easement.
I don't think we're asking you to take on some of our work at all. I think that when folks build their homes and they're given a building permit many, many years ago, sometimes the easements are recognized and sometimes they're not. And so, what's been allowed within the right-of-way, we could have taken a very firm line with what was built in there. We've chosen not to, based on what we've seen for what was allowed, in terms of what was allowed in their building permit, and what we've, if one neighbor does it, how can we tell the other neighbor not to do it? That's the approach we've taken, and we certainly understand it's an issue. Our servicemen have an issue getting to the line. I mean, there's no secret. Lots of folks in this room may have given the servicemen access to the line at the time, at certain times. So, we know there's a problem. We're working to fix it. We're looking at our, at our easements, what, what's actually allowed, because they're transmission and distribution easements. It's a hodgepodge of easements, as is fairly typical on, on old, older lines. Not that it hasn't been rebuilt or redone in places, it's just that it's been there in one shape or another for a very long time. So, we're looking at that. We're looking at ways we can install switches and reclosers, as I've mentioned, that we're going to do to make power outages much shorter in areas where we already have access and already have ease of equipment into the line. But no, we're not looking for the city to do our work. We're just looking for a partner to talk with folks. I mean, we're willing to do it on our own, but we'd like it if, if we got to do it together.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks for coming and, and sharing this with us. I had a couple of questions about the, the big outage where a lot of Kenmore was out for eight or nine or 10 days back seven or eight, nine years ago. It seemed to me that there were major transmission lines that were down that fed this whole area, and they had to, had to fix all that first before they could figure out what was out locally. This time, I don't think that was the case, although it seemed like the whole city went out at the same time. And I can't imagine that trees were falling on Circuit 26 and Circuit 25, or whatever they're numbered, all around the city at the same time. Was it a transmission line that went out?
It was. And I, maybe I wasn't clear enough. Yep. Maybe I wasn't clear enough in the presentation. In this last outage in November, the whole city did go out at basically one time because our transmission lines went out that served Kenmore, Bothell, and many other communities.
So, then you had to fix the transmission line that went out first to figure out where there were breaks elsewhere.
Yeah. And so, I could talk a little bit about kind of our system and what's recognized as an outage, if you'd like me to, or if you've got more. Okay. So, I have the privilege or the, the excitement of sitting in the storm room when storms happen. And so, I'm not, I don't operate our systems, but I can talk about how they work. So, when outages occur, people call into the call center, they go online, they report their outage. When folks report their outage, it goes through our system and it builds up to the next closing switch or open, next item that they can be closed in or off on. Maybe that's a switch. happen, and so I'm not, I don't operate our systems, but I can talk about how they work. So when outages occur, people call into the call center, they go online, they report their outage. When folks report their outage, it goes through our system and it builds up to the next closing switch or open, next item that they can be closed in or off on. Maybe that's a switch, maybe it's a transformer, it just depends on where the outage is. So it builds up in the system, and so we know people are out of power, and it builds it all up in the system until it goes to the transmission circuit. In this particular case, people were calling in their outages and reporting their outages online, but we had a transmission outage, and so everything, we couldn't, the system goes black. Once the transmission outage occurs, we can't see anything that's happened beyond the transmission line. So we need to get that transmission line restored exactly as you said to then see what's happened below it. We know if the transmission line goes down, we expect there's going to be damage further on. And so we've got people out patrolling immediately, finding the damage themselves without having to wait for people to report their outages. We've got, I didn't focus on our damage assessment teams, but in the North King area, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 damage assessment teams, and our serviceman crews also serve as damage assessment teams to determine quickly where we have issues that we can, as soon as our transmission lines are restored or in tandem with restoration of those transmission lines, we can get out there and restore the distribution facilities as well.
On situations like Circuit 26 that you can't have access to unless you're hiking through the brush, could you use a drone?
We don't.
Have you considered doing that?
We don't own or operate any drones at this time.
Yeah, but I'm thinking that might be a solution to these inaccessible areas. You find a break between Joe Blow's house and his neighbor, and then you can address those people and say, hey, can we come through your yards to fix this? Gladly, we want our power back.
We do helicopter patrols right now.
Okay. You think you can see it from that height, where the problems are?
Well, they're professionals, and I have done helicopter patrols years ago for the utility.
From the air, you could probably inspect those routes where you don't have a road underneath them.
Right. We had helicopter patrols up here this last outage.
The other concern I had was, well, in August, it was the perfect storm because it wasn't a real strong blow, but the trees were brittle because they were dry, and the soil was dry and brittle, and trees went over and roots came up, and yeah. It was, normally you wouldn't have that much wind in August, and it was a real surprise. Mrs. Heine made the comment about the value of a product. If you live in Bellevue, you hardly ever lose your power, right?
That's not necessarily the case.
Is it more reliable in Bellevue than it is in Kenmore?
It would depend on what we're talking about in Bellevue. We've got some circuits in Bellevue with just as many problems as Kenmore.
Are there some circuits that do never have problems, never have problems?
No.
Oh, okay. But to me, I would think that there's some areas that have more problems with the reliability than others. We just look over here across the lake, and we see Sheridan Beach, Lake Forest Park, they all had power through the whole thing, never lost it. Their power's more reliable than ours, at least in the last storm. Now, I just recently bought a new car. I could have kept the old one or bought another 10-year-old car, but its reliability wasn't that great, and therefore that car wasn't worth what a new car is anymore. A new car costs a lot more, and people often buy new cars every year so that they have reliability. They're willing to pay a little higher to have that reliability. Those people that don't care about the reliability, then they're getting along with lower-cost transportation. Now, if we have lower reliability in Kenmore than they do in downtown Seattle, shouldn't our power cost less? I mean, why are we paying the same amount for less reliability? That's my point.
I can't tell you what you pay compared to Seattle City Light customers for downtown Seattle.
Okay, then. Then Bellevue Square. Okay? Did Bellevue Square lose power?
This last storm? I'm not sure.
Okay. So that's just a question, you know, and if we can work on the system, I would rather pay the same amount and not get a cut because it's not reliable. I would rather see better reliability, and from what you presented to us tonight, you're working towards that, and I applaud you for it. So thank you for realizing that there are improvements that could be made, so thank you.
We're trying to make those improvements.
Councilmember Curtis.
Thank you again for coming. I am up on the 26th on the other side of the hill up here north. There was a suggestion that maybe an extra line could be brought in from another jurisdiction north or west of here so that if something was interrupted on our main transmission lines that we'd have a backup that could be turned on. Is that at all a possibility?
I never want to say nothing is a possibility. I would just say that, for instance, I know that it was brought up, Snohomish County PUD, we could connect to them. Their outages lasted much longer than our outages did in this area. I mean, just across your border, they were out for another day to two more days in this past windstorm. I can't speak to Seattle City Light's service reliability, they are a public utility just like Snowpud. Snowpud puts out a little more information than Seattle City Light does, but they're not required to release their out information like we are.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you for coming this evening. I have a question. We were, I thought I had been told sometime in the last couple of months that we were further down the line in this process of how power gets restored. Is there, can you just tell me, is there any truth to that, and can you explain why that would be the case or how that works? Because you didn't mention that at all, and I'm trying to understand where we fall in the power restoration sequence.
Oh, so like, are you restored before or after Bellevue?
Not Bellevue.
I mean, just as an example.
Well, yeah, and so let me tell you why I ask, is because, I mean, I kind of think of it analogous as a football stadium, and if you're on the 300 level, you know, you wouldn't typically pay the same fee for a ticket as you would if you're at the field. And so if we're further down the line, I'm trying to understand, if we're paying the same rate, then it at least seems reasonable that we would have maybe a higher level of capital improvements to create fewer outages, if that's indeed the fact. I'm just trying to understand.
Right, so I've heard the rumor that you guys are restored last or later because you're farther down the line, and I can tell you that's not true at all. So as I talked about, and I can go back to that slide if you'd like, we restore power to every community based on the exact same metrics. We first have to figure out what the damage is. That sometimes is done automatically when people report outages, it's sometimes done automatically at the substation, it tells us when a transmission line goes out. Sometimes it's done by our servicemen or damage assessors in the field telling us what the damage is. We know, once we know what the damage is, and often before we know all the damage, once we know the most critical damage, transmission lines are always restored first. Transmission lines serve more than one community. So our transmission lines that serve Kenmore, Bothell, Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, they're all connected. Those transmission lines will be put back into service, are prioritized to be put back into service before anything else. So all the faults or outages on those, breaks, et cetera, they will be prioritized. If there's 17 breaks and 17 crews, all 17 crews will be sent to that transmission line to get it up and running, because that's what's going to provide power to all the communities, mostly, you know, obviously right away. Immediately after or during that timeframe, depending on the amount of damage to the transmission line, we are working to restore the circuits, the distribution circuits and the substations. The substations occasionally have damage to them themselves if a tree falls into the substation. I also cover Anacortes, we had that last time, we had a tree fall into the substation. Hasn't happened here recently, but it could happen. Or something else, a bird could fly into the substation and cause a major outage, those types of things happen. Those are brought back on with or after the transmission line depending on the level of damage. We have substation crews that are different than our power line crews. While or after that's happening, depending again on the level of damage, hospitals are restored. Circuits with hospitals on them are restored first. They're absolutely critical lifelines for our communities, they are always restored first. Schools, et cetera, are restored on about the same timeframe as other major industry, other major things like community centers or grocery stores types of things, but schools are another huge priority for us because they're often gathering houses. If it was a major, major event, it can sometimes serve as warming shelters, those types of things. In tandem or immediately after, all of the rest of the circuits are going to be worked on to be restored because they're the hubs of electricity, if you will, that provide power to the most folks, like Kenmore 26 is somewhere around 1,000 customers, give or That will be worked on to be restored first. And then we have lots of little lines that connect to those circuits that I called lateral, I quickly covered that, that may or may not, you as a homeowner or business owner may or may not connect directly to that circuit. Oftentimes, you're connected to a lateral line, either above or below ground. Below ground, we can have faults on that system during a storm, after a storm, any other time, same as above ground. We will then go to restore those lateral lines last. So Kenmore has nine circuits. We'll restore those nine circuits as fast as we restore nine circuits anywhere else in our system. If we've got 17 crews, we're going to disperse some amount amongst our communities to bring your circuits back on as quick as Kirkland or Redmond. Then we'll go to the lateral connections, the smaller connections, and we'll restore by the number of customers impacted first. So if you've got a lateral line that just goes from your home to the circuit, you might be restored as one of our last customers. But if you're on a lateral line with 20, or 40, or 50 other customers, you're going to get that lateral line, that larger amount of outages will be restored first before the next smaller outage. And that's just to get power restored the fastest to the most amount of people.
Okay, okay, so just so I understand, so, and then we're on equal footing with Redmond or Kirkland or anybody else, the way you just described?
We're on exactly equal footing, correct.
Okay. And so since we have these outages on the Circuit 26 and the easement issue, I would like to also, it was mentioned by Councilmember Herbig, I would say that absolutely is responsibility of PSC. I understand working with the city, but I would not want to be the lead on it. I think you guys need to step up and really aggressively pursue what needs to happen. It's one thing to have a fence blocking something even, you know, 20 years ago, but I work out of my house, I'm a small business owner, and it is a big deal. And so to think somebody's deck or porch might be impacted because PSC didn't enforce their easement, that's, it's, I mean, really, it's completely out of proportion to the problem for those that do lose power. And so I would say, you know, do everything you can to step up and enforce those easements. They've been there, they were there when, you know, the people get titled to their house, they see there's an easement there, and, you know, it's your responsibility to enforce it though, so that, and when they see you enforce it, people will recognize it, and it will change behavior. But if it's never enforced, there's no reason to expect them to change. And so I would hope you'd do that. And then on the plans that you have, the details, is that available online? There was three different plans you talk about in the Wanita area and different things. Is there something online that citizens and customers can go to to see what those updates and those details are?
We don't have our plans online at this time.
Could you put those online? That would be something that would be nice for people to...
I'd have to find out.
Again, I mean, I would think with the way technology is, there would be no logical reason not to be able to have that available, so we can at least see what you're planning, and people, again, it sets an expectation of what the community can expect.
I can't make any promises, I don't know what we can and cannot post online for security reasons.
Okay, and then lastly, I have one other thing. Do you do anything with state highways to assure that the traffic signaling is uninterrupted?
We work with WashDOT as one of our primary customers and partners in power restoration and opening of critical roads, et cetera. I mean, I'm in constant communication with them during storms.
So when it goes out, why is a state highway like 522, why wouldn't it automatically revert to a backup system? Is that something that you can be a part of to help facilitate work with the WashDOT to see that that occurs? Because it seems really extraordinary that we have a state highway running through the middle of our community, and when those lights go out, that's a big deal. That brings the whole city to a standstill.
I can understand it, it's, I saw plenty of complaints on Facebook, on my own personal friend pages, et cetera. I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know the interlocal agreements on 522, I don't know what our agreements, if we have any with WashDOT there, if they've all been with Kenmore, I don't, can't speak to that. We can certainly take that back and look into it.
Please do, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Januski.
So actually, Councilmember Smith asked my question. In your presentation, you had mentioned that we got our power back this time before Woodinville, so I was wondering if we kind of got the squeaky wheel gets the grease treatment this time that we won't get again, so, but you answered that as that we didn't, that everybody gets theirs. I did like your Safeway station this time, which I hadn't seen before, but I was at Safeway for a really long time getting donations for a Thanksgiving program, and lots of people came by, and that was actually really helpful, so if you could continue that, that would be good.
It is something that we've, it's a recent thing, since I came to PSC about a year and a half ago, and we just started doing them, they're really critical to us moving forward to make sure folks can be as informed as they, as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Sperry.
I don't really have anything, I think that a lot of the questions have been already asked, so I do appreciate you being here. I do think that it was, at least, first of all, I think what we learned is we all need electricity more than we need electric, I mean, it's more and more dependent on it. And just as an anecdotal, I don't know if you saw the grateful things around, written around here, well, our city ended up, City Hall ended up being kind of a shelter for people because, you know, they obviously wanted information, they wanted something warm to drink, something to charge up their phone, that kind of thing, so I was really grateful for that, and I guess some of the kids decided to do some artwork with the gratefulness, and electricity definitely made it on there, I was being grateful for electricity. So we, you know, we all have our story, and I have a new used dryer because the other one got burned up by the electricity, it's fine. But, you know, it does affect us, and anything that you can do that would shorten the durations, obviously, we don't control the weather, but anything you can do to get us back and run it as soon as possible is great. So hopefully those new improvements will be a benefit to the problem areas. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
I had a question related to restoration notification. So our medical clinic is about a block that way, and we literally had to just take it half a day, half a day, half a day at a time, and we'd keep canceling people because we had no clue when the power was going to be back. And then some people couldn't get a hold of them because their power wasn't working, so it was sort of a challenge running a medical clinic, and I realized that's not as important as a hospital, but it was, the message was, it's being evaluated, and we don't know when it'll be back, maybe the weekend, was sort of the, so it was back two days sooner than we had hoped. So from that standpoint, it was great, but it really made it difficult to keep in contact with our patients.
We're aware of that, and because of the transmission outages, we really didn't know how bad the damage was. I mean, we had assessors out in the field, but we had focused so much effort on getting those transmission lines back up and powered that we, our estimated restoration times for everyone on the, you know, East Kingside weren't super great this time because we had to get our transmission lines back into service.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I appreciate, I like the cell phone app, I mean, when this happened, it sure told me a lot, but the computer and the social media stuff, I mean, most people don't have access to that because their power's gone, so while it's good, there's downside to it. And I'm just curious here, what is this going to add to the average person's bill, these costs of repairs?
I have no idea, they're not, we don't add in storm costs to a bill immediately.
No, I mean, to these repairs you're doing online, like you've got on 26, and certainly those repair and replacement things don't get done for free. It's cost, your cost of doing business, and it will, it gets transferred down to the customer's bills, so I'm just curious what kind of increases...
I can talk about our budget and how things are approved and how they're built into the budget at a very high level. I am not a budget expert at all. We have a budget for capital improvement projects that we do every year, and so our planners evaluate areas that need improvement the most, and Kenmore, because of the recent issues, is an area that needs improvement. And so it's built into our already proposed capital budget that's been in the works for years. And so we have a set amount of dollars that we've talked about with our rate, you know, rate cases years ago for capital improvement down the line, and that's just one of those. So every community has an issue or not, I mean, some communities have issues, some communities don't, excuse me, and those communities then, our planners evaluate what's the most important in terms of number of customers, outages experienced, past history, recent repairs, those types of things, and then they build it into their system, and then they propose those projects that are within an already existing capital improvement budget.
So you've been talking about this, about this area 26 up there with, in the northwest part of town, but we also have this problem area over around 68th and 170th, Simon's Road. That seems to be affected quite a bit.
I think that's Kenmore 26.
And I'm wondering, what kind of improvements do you have in that area?
My understanding is there are some additional switches and changes to the existing configurations that have already been in the works and happening. I can't speak to all of the changes that they have proposed. I know that all of Kenmore has several switches in the pipeline, has a distribution automation project for South Kenmore in the pipeline, and then has a re-closer for Kenmore 26 in the pipeline.
So then, instead of large areas going out, potentially putting in more switches is going to make smaller areas?
Right. So if an outage occurs, we can isolate it down to a much smaller area and then get the repairs made quicker.
Are we ever going to see anything in Kenmore on the smart grid technology?
Smart grid can be used many different ways, but our distribution automation project that's going in in South Kenmore, that is the smartest of the current smart grid out there.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. One of the things that comes up pretty regularly is people think that if we underground all the power, the distribution lines, that then there won't be as many power outages. Is there, do you have anything to add to that?
We can certainly talk about undergrounding and faults that can occur during, with underground power lines, et cetera. I'm not sure to what level folks have talked about undergrounding lines. I have an underground line to my home, my whole neighborhood does. In the August storm, we were out for four days. So it doesn't always solve the problem. Transmission lines are not undergrounded, they're overhead. If there's an outage on a transmission line, it's going to be an outage for everybody. I will also say that in terms of damage and accessibility and what we can see, we can see and repair overhead power lines much quicker than underground power lines. We can't see them, we don't know where the fault is, and then we have, it spends hours and hours repairing those underground lines. So sometimes it's a short-term gain for a long-term pain. It just depends on the area and what it is.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, if I could just make a quick comment. Rob and I heard from Ray Lynn and her colleagues quite frequently the other day with progress reports. We appreciated that. And I think at the December 14 meeting, Rob will offer some thoughts on some of the things that we'll probably want to be covering in the franchise discussions that are coming up. And we hope to have you back again, maybe after storm season.
Sounds good.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we want to take a couple minutes? No? Fine. Next item on the agenda, adopt ordinance number 15-0413, amending the 2015-2016 biennial budget. Ms. Gregory.
Don't feel, you're still up there.
I know how to clear a room. Nicely done. They're scared.
Should I wait for the mayor? We lost one.
Deputy Mayor, what do you want to do?
We lost David.
Where did he go?
Ms. Gregory. Your honor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight, there are several year-in action items to be presented for your approval, and we'll start with the mid-biennial budget amendment. Two weeks ago, on November 9, a public hearing was held to receive comment on the results of the mid-biennial review and recommended budget amendments. Ordinance 15-0413 reestablishes the amended revenue and expenditure budgets for ten funds. Almost half of the amendments represent transfers between funds, and many of the revised budgets are reflective of adjustments made to capital projects when the capital improvement plan was amended in February, and may be again this evening. The agenda packet contains considerable more detail of the various budget changes, which were reviewed at the November 9 meetings. And also the budget, also the budget amendment ordinance includes an Exhibit A, which establishes the salary plan going into 2016. The changes to the salary plan include the creation of a public records officer administrative assistant, the renaming of the building permit specialist to permit and administrative specialist, and sets the salary plan for those two positions and the accounting technician to all be in the same range. Otherwise, there are no changes from the 2015, from 2015 to the salary plan or the pay ranges. So considering the detail in the agenda packet, that concludes my comments this evening on this item, and I'll take any questions, if there are any.
Questions? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-0413, amending the 2015-2016 biennial budget.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the top ordinance number 15-0412, amending the 2015-2020 Capital Improvement Program, the CIP. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you again, Mayor and Councilmembers. Also, on November 9, in combination with the public hearing on the mid-biennial adjustments, a second update and proposed amendment to the 2015-2020 Capital Improvement Plan was reviewed. There were changes to two transportation projects and six park projects in the amended CIP. No changes are proposed to the surface water capital program. The changes are a result of carrying forward unspent funds from 2014 for three park projects, establishing one new transportation roundabout project, and two new park projects. It also removes one transportation project, SR 522 WSB, from the six-year plan, and accelerates funds allocated for the Morelands Park project. And the impact of these adjustments on the 2015-2016 biennial budget is an additional $853 expenditure amount, which has been included in the recommended budget amendment previously approved. Are there any questions regarding the CIP amendments?
Your Honor, can I jump in here for a second?
Absolutely.
So the Transportation Improvement Board met last Thursday and Friday, and so we called down there Friday afternoon to find out if we were awarded the roundabout grant for 61st Avenue and 193rd. And the answer is no, we did not get it. We did not rank high enough compared to the other applications that were out there through the state. So this CIP is already out of date. And that's what we find about our CIP. It changes several times a year. So I'm recommending that you still adopt it tonight, and we'll probably come back in the springtime, probably first quarter, second quarter, to amend it and readjust.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. The chair will then entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-0412, amending the 2015 and 2020 Capital Improvement Program.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness? Oh. Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
So do we just leave?
He's just outside the door.
Should we bring him back?
Yeah, bring him back.
He doesn't know what we're voting on, I guess.
We need your vote on the CIP.
Yes.
There you go. Unanimous. All right. Next item on the agenda, adopt ordinance number 15-0411 relating to the 2016 regular property tax levy. Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Everybody left just at the most important point here.
I think so, but... So on November 16, a public hearing was held to receive public comment on the proposed 2016 property tax levy. An ordinance 15-0411 sets the levy at $4,556,217, which includes no percentage increase from 2015, and only includes the increase due to new construction and refund re-levis. This amount of the levy would exceed our 2016 budget for property taxes by $34,690 and result in an approximate levy rate of about $1.26 per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. During the presentation last week, we discussed the impacts that an IPD that's less than 1% might have on your tax levy decision. And there were a couple of comments and questions raised that I'd like to try and clarify tonight. The city has, currently has bank tax capacity of $590,000. And whenever the council chooses not to raise the levy to the fullest allowable limit, the bank capacity increases. So for the many years that the council did not raise the levy by the 1% allowable amount, the bank capacity grew. The reason bank capacity would decline, as we discussed last week, if the council chose to take the IPD limit factor of one quarter of 1%, remember, I mentioned that if we did that, our IP, our bank capacity would decrease. It's a complicated math calculation in comparison that the assessor does. The assessor calculates the city's allowable levy every year in two ways. They take the prior year's allowable levy and multiply it, they multiply it by the 1% limit factor, and also by the IPD limit. So when the IPD is lower than 1%, it will obviously be lower than when you multiply it by 1%. So then, that result is compared to the levy that you actually take, and then it will be less, your bank capacity is the difference between the allowable limit and what you actually take. And so, because the IPD calculation results in a smaller amount, your bank capacity is So I hope that that clarifies that question. It's a simple, but, a simple calculation, but a complicated concept.
Deputy Mayor. But if we don't take an increase, even the 025, 25%, 25% of 1%, right? Quarter of a percent?
It's a quarter of 1%. Yes.
If we don't take that, our bank capacity increases.
Yes.
Is that right? By 1%?
Yes.
Okay.
It does. It increases. So every year that you do not take your allowable levy, your bank capacity goes up. It's not exactly the 1%. It just, but it's close.
It's a formula.
It's a formula. But it does, it does go up, and that's how it's grown over the years when you did not...
So it goes down if we take a quarter of a percent, and it'll go up if we don't take the quarter of a percent. Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions? It's a shame. Had a room full of people, and nobody knows we're not taking the increase. Okay.
I just told them out there.
I know. It's, it's...
Go ahead.
I did want to add some other information that came up last week, if you'll entertain me.
Yes.
Okay. The question arose about the ongoing effect of taking the bank capacity. And if the city were to take, let's just say, take all the bank capacity in a year, in the next year, that will raise your levy up to almost the total allowable levy, and it will continue from there on. So that would be an ongoing tax benefit to the city. So now your levy base goes up, and then it can go up by 1% every year beyond that. But of course, the impact on a residential homeowner would be a kind of a spike in the tax rate.
So in reality, though, since the middle levy is going from 130-something?
136.
136 down to 126? There's a reduction?
Correct.
In the property tax?
In the rate.
In the rate?
In the rate. Right. It's been dropping as our assessed valuation goes up faster than, you know, we're raising our levy.
All right.
It's almost at a historical low, in fact.
Any other questions? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 15-0411 relating to the 2016 regular property tax levy.
So moved.
Moved. Is it second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. We don't get you in front of us for this long very often. Next item on the agenda is adopt resolution number 15-269, making a declaration of substantial need for purposes of setting the limit factor for the 2016 property tax levy.
Okay. So this is a partner to the ordinance that you just approved, where you're taking no increase. Due to the fact, again, that this year, the implicit price deflator at one quarter of 1% is obviously less than 1, the city, being over 10,000 in population, can only take advantage of receiving or banking a 1% increase if a resolution declaring substantial need is adopted. We recognize that the city has many competing demands for its limited resources, and at any point in the future, may need to utilize its full taxing capacity or its bank capacity. This resolution would allow the city to receive the benefit of the full 1% increase in the tax levy over 2015. And because a zero increase ordinance has already been passed, the 1% excess will increase your bank capacity. And I do need to remind you, too, that this resolution, making a declaration of substantial need, requires a majority of the council, plus one, to approve. Are there any questions about this item?
Any questions? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 15-269, making a declaration of substantial need for purposes of setting the limit factor for the 2016 property tax levy.
So moved.
Moved and...
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, adopt resolution number 15-270 with the City of Lake Forest Park for joint emergency management, and authorize the city manager to execute inter-local agreement contract number 15-C1492, and authorize the city manager to execute inter-local agreement contract number 15-C1488 with the City of Lake Forest Park, North Shore Utility District, and North Shore Fire District, forming the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. Mr. Hampson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you all may know, ESCA, the Emergency Services Coordinating Agency, is going to dissolve at the end of the year, and these two ILAs would give the, would allow the city to do two things. So the first ILA would be to allow the city to form a joint local emergency organization with the City of Lake Forest Park for our overarching emergency management services that are required by the state. The second ILA would be to form the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition with the City of Lake Forest Park, the North Shore Utility District, and the Fire District to coordinate between, excuse me, to hire a contractor to help us prepare our emergency management plans and coordinate our volunteers and other services needed, as required by the state emergency management program. That's pretty much it. I mean, are there any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none. We're going to have to do this in all sorts of different... We're going to have to do this in all sorts of different ways here, because there's a lot of different things. So Chair will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 15-270 with the City of Lake Forest Park for joint emergency management and authorize the city manager to execute the inter-local agreement contract number 15-C1492.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So just to be clear, we're adopting resolution number 15-270 with Lake Forest Park for joint emergency management, and then we're authorizing city manager to execute the inter-local agreement number 15-C1492.
I'm sorry, together or separately?
Those two are together.
Okay.
Do that?
Do you want them together, or should we do them separately?
Yes, because that contract is authorized in the resolution.
Yes, okay.
That's the reason.
Right. So they both go together?
Also, I need to point out that in the council bill, it says substantial in the form attached heretofore, or something like that. Brian is doing some minor language tweaks still, getting all four of these jurisdictions exactly on the same sheet of music, as far as exact language is like herding cats, but the main principles of the agreements will stay intact.
All right.
Mayor Baker, maybe I can make a quick clarification?
Sure.
The resolution before the council right now with its attached agreement is only between Kenmore and Lake Forest Park.
Right.
So I just wanted to clarify that that one does not have a substantial form language.
That one does not.
This one does not have that language. Just wanted to clarify that. The next one does.
Right.
When you say the next one, what do you mean the next one?
The...
1488.
NEMC.
Are you going to adopt that separately right after?
Yes.
Perfect.
That's why we're doing these two and then the next one.
Okay.
All right. So is everybody clear? All right. So then the motion is, I need a motion to adopt resolution number 15-270 and 1492, and we have that. So that's clarification. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right.
I didn't hear who first and seconded, who moved and seconded.
I seconded. I'm not sure who.
Seconded?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, next one is to authorize the city manager to execute inter-local agreement contract number 15-C1488 with the City of Lake Forest Park, North Shore Utility District, and North Shore Fire District, forming the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. NEMIC.
So moved.
Second.
NEMIC.
No, no, there's no A in. All right. Stacy Danuski?
That was an MC.
Made the motion, and Councilmember Smith did the second. All right. Any further discussion? So we're authorizing the city manager to execute inter-local, or yeah, the inter-local 15-C1488 with the City of Lake Forest Park, North Shore Utility District, and North Shore Fire District, forming the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmembers Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right.
Thank you, Brian.
We're making headway. Staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. This agenda was packed, for tonight's meeting, was packed with a lot of important policies and ordinances and contracts, and a lot of them were on the consent agenda. The Hazard Mitigation Plan that you adopted tonight, though on consent, represents a significant amount of work done by my coworkers, Lori Anderson in particular and others, put a lot of time into that. So I just want to publicly recognize them and thank them for that work. And I could say that about several other things on the agenda, but that's just one example of a lot of background work that's gone into things that got adopted pretty quickly tonight because they were on consent. Also, I believe we have two more city council meetings before the year is over. So next Monday, 9th to 30th, you have an executive session scheduled at 7:00 PM to discuss personnel. And then no meeting on December 7th. Everybody, that's not news to anybody, right? Okay. And then we have the last regular city council meeting of the year on December 14th, and then the December 21st and 28th city council meetings will be canceled. And that's all I have.
All right. Councilmember reports, comments, initiatives. Councilmember Smith?
Nada.
Nada.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sperry?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski?
Nothing for me.
Deputy Mayor?
Nothing here.
As usual, I'm sorry. Got a couple. I had the pleasure of going to Inglewood High School last Friday with the city manager, where we talked with, we had a presentation from three different teams in the engineering program for the kids, and they were taking a look and had ideas with what they would do with St. Edward Seminary. And it was some conceptual stuff, and I'm telling you, we've got some very talented kids in our community, and I don't think we do enough to recognize that. It was really good, really informative. I've been traveling around and meeting with a lot of different state representatives and senators. I know that I've been doing it as part of an aging committee I'm on, but I never fail to get Kenmore in there, so that when it comes time, they'll know who Kenmore is. So with that, let's see. We don't have anything else. So I wish everybody a really happy Thanksgiving and hope your holidays are great. And with that, we'll be adjourned. There's something going on the 7th.